I will call to order this meeting for Tuesday, April 4th, for the East Hampton Planning Board. First of all, is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, moving right along, we have Planning Board minutes from our March 21st meeting. Anybody have any errors or omissions?
No.
They looked good when I read them.
Yep. Seconded.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed and I will abstain as I was not present. All right, moving right along, no A and Rs, on to old business, the continued public hearing for the special permit amendment for Fort Hill Road. I am going to recuse myself from this one, sir James.
All righty.
It's all yours.
You'll be missed. Just give him a moment to mosey on out. He's moseying.
There's moseying. Move a little faster than that, you know?
All right. We have a continued hearing for the special permit amendment for 30 Fort Hill Road, 1776 Brewing Company. You had said that you had take a couple of weeks to give us some additional information. Are you guys ready?
I believe so.
Do you want to come and share with us what you've done?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to do it.
I guess as per one of the requests we had at the last Planning Board meeting was to identify some of the lighting that needs to be installed at the brewery. We sent this out through professional design engineer like for lighting and have three handling room does all the work for Dan Whitley, Whitley Electric in town here. He brought the plans in, basically using the same lighting that we were originally proposing along the strip, along the main parking lot here. The adding of the top light at the top of the hill here.
Yep.
An additional light over in this area here. There's also an additional light in the back corner here, as well as a double-headed light that will go down and shine on both sides of the parking area in the back area here. The, they took into all this account here to light the area around the building that takes into account anything less than decorative lighting that's going to be done for landscape, low voltage lighting, things like that. So, all the lighting that's on here right now is adequate for safety purposes to light the entire property. And it's designed, it's LED lighting, it's not projection lighting, it's downward lighting, so it won't be lighting that's shining out towards the neighbors or off the property. It's contained on the property. One of the other questions came up was as far as the landscaping plan. We do have basically the same design that was presented at the last meeting. There's some questions about as far as the types of vegetation that was going to be planted in this, in this area. We're still working on the theme of the, of the patio area as far as, as what exactly that's going to be. But as far as the vegetation, like some Luke actually did the design work for here. So, I mean, he has some, some, they said questions about the types of species and stuff like that. As far as ever means and act as a visual buffer throughout the entire year of growth and help to minimize some of the noise coming out of that area that won't be handled by the building. I believe that's where we're at as far as those comments and the questions that were done at that point. I guess I can refer myself now to Mr. Gary Swanson who's taking over as our site engineer to deal with stormwater management and the pavement.
My next question?
Establish my presence here. Gary Swanson, I'm a professional engineer that's got a little drainage. I just came on board late last week, but I wanted to give you an idea. That, basically what we're doing is, there's certain areas that are being paved now. There's a pavement line here. You're aware that this is going to be paved, that the driveway, which is, all of this is processed gravel, now compacted processed gravel, is going to be paved. My job is to, you know, check the runoff coefficients, make sure that everything is going to be handled properly from a stormwater management standpoint. Make sure that we're not adding any problems to Fort Hill Road. Basically, that's it. It's, it's not a particularly difficult problem because we're not paving a great deal of area, but I will certainly come in with a plan that should be satisfactory to the Planning Board as soon as I have a chance to put everything together. But I mainly tonight, obviously I don't have a finished proposal for you, but I just want to establish the fact that I'm here and I'm working on it. And you'll have something before too long.
Okay, so is it, my understanding then that you need a little bit more time to?
About that?
Yes.
All right, so here's the situation. We're ready, we're, we're ready to, shovels are ready to do this project. And from really a personal standpoint, we would really prefer to get this project moving as quickly as possible because right now what we currently have, we're not adequately able to deal with the massive amounts of people that are coming, what? With the people that are coming onto our property.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Careful.
Wrong, wrong. And realistically, we have designed a setting that is able to contain people and cars in a efficient manner, and water for that matter. And so, we no longer advertise in any form, yet unfortunately, people still do come. This is an issue for us. So, we are very motivated to solve the issues for both safety and, I guess, general patronage. And with the current plan that we have in stated, I think that we're going to be able to minimize a lot of the chaos that is, or has currently happened. So, in, in an ideal situation, we really would like to begin construction as soon as possible. Granted, Gary over here does not have, he has not done the math, but he's visited our site numerous times and is very aware of the various situations that we have. So, if I'm not too bold, I would like to ask that we have, I, I, I wish that we had, I guess, advised everyone through the news or for whatever, through whatever way that this meeting was going to occur. But I would really like to ask if we could have this project move forward contingent on a proper drainage and parking plan. Now, in the, in the worst-case scenario that the drainage or parking does not work, it will be quite apparent and we will probably, I imagine legally, have to redo it in the worst, in the very worst-case scenario that it does not work. So.
Okay.
That's all I gotta say.
Any, anything else you guys, by way of presentation, have for us?
I think that's it. Unless Gary's got something?
Only just one brief postscript, and that is that what is out there right now on site, which one would normally think is pervious, you know, that we're changing the nature of the runoff. And that is really not the case here. What they've got out there right now is a very dense processed gravel. That stuff's like cement. It, it's runoff characteristics are not going to be a great deal different than the paving that we're putting in. So, basically even with his addition with the roof, obviously roof areas are impervious, but it's going to be over what was previously impervious to begin with. So, I guess what, basically what I'm saying is that what Eric is requesting is not so outrageous as it may appear and that is that we're not really changing much of anything. My job is pretty simple on that site. I'll take care of the runoff, but basically we're not changing the impervious to any extent whatsoever. I'm just crossing the Ts and dotting the Is for you all. So, I don't think that that should be a major hold, hold-up factor
If, um.
in your considerations.
If we do decide, if the board does decide that it requires the stormwater management information, the plan, how long do you think it will be before you'd have that ready?
We already have Holmberg and Hal, they're willing to be on our, actually they visited our site this morning and they're going to, they did a, a general observation of the site and they are going to, as, as soon as, this coming Thursday, start doing what they have to do. I don't know what it is. Gary knows.
Yeah. The reason I couldn't answer the question, I didn't have the updated information and when we'd get the survey that I needed in order to do my work. But obviously, it's going to be imminent. So, I would say that my part of it, you know, the end of next week perhaps, or something of that nature.
So, two weeks?
It, it's imminent.
By two weeks you'd have it ready is what, is what you're saying?
Sure.
All right, thank you. All right, board, you have a request.
So, the landscaping plan is not complete yet? Is that what you said?
It's a preliminary plan. I mean, just calling out species is basically what needs to be done and deciding what kind of storm we use in the patio.
Wasn't that one of the requirements we asked for? Was a?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I, I think the reason that the board was looking for a more detailed landscape plan is because the applicant stated that the landscaping was going to be a noise mitigator.
Right.
And if we don't have species to determine if that's going to work or not, it's hard to make that on a very preliminary draft plan that has a couple of arborvitae's pulled out, but that's it.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, 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 I think what the board is looking for is on, from the planting plan, some, some, some understanding of the noise mitigation.
So, the plan's not going to change.
State your name, please.
Uh, Luke Lapine. The plan, the design is not going to change at all. And I think the calling out of a soundproof evergreen barrier should be sufficient enough to say what it's going to do, you know? It's not going to change whether it's an arborvitae or it's a fall cypress. Now, they're basically have the same habit and the same, same forms.
So, what size are they going to be when they're planted in? Are they going to be small? Are they going to be big? You mean, there's, you just say 10-foot arborvitae sound buffer. Are they going to be 10-foot going in? Or are they going to be small going in?
I guess this is why we're having this discussion and
I'm passing this down, that's the draft plan statement.
This is not a one-sided discussion. We're very much coming to you guys for your input.
Okay.
And what, what you require, we're, we're going to do.
Right. So, so Jessica's question is a good one. Are the 10-foot arborvitae's going in as 10 feet tall?
Probably not. 10-foot arborvitae's are very expensive.
They are.
Yeah, but that's kind of what you need to buffer the noise.
Right.
Well, an eight-foot arborvitae's basically as big as you're going to buy. I mean, and actually for the health of the plant, the smaller you plant it, the better it is. So, if you want this barrier to last, you don't just want to throw in a mature plant, it's not going to adapt to the site.
Well, that's, that's fair.
Which is true, but at the same time, I think that the board needs to kind of weigh those two things and understand that, you know, you want to plant trees that are going to last and that, you know, there may be some board condition where if they die within two years, they need to be re-planted. I mean, I think that's something, you know, a fair warranty that is a typical condition on a lot of special permits and that's something to think about.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
It's a standard condition.
How long does it take for these things to grow? If you put one there, say, say, three feet or four feet, how long would it take to get to 10 feet?
I don't think three or four foot would do it. I think if you start with a six to eight-foot arborvitae.
Six to eight feet?
Probably within two to three years, you'll probably have a good 10-foot hedge. And as they're spaced, I believe they're about eight feet on center. So, if they grow 10 feet wide and they're eight feet on center, that's going to be a pretty good, solid barrier for block time. Obviously, you're not going to be able to block all the sound with a bush, but I think every effort you can make is good.
Then, the last time you folks were here and we were discussing noise abatement, you agreed to put up a plexiglass wall, as I recall, to help buffer the sound?
Correct. And actually, that's?
Okay, by his own statement that he just made, trees are not going to buffer all of the sound.
Okay.
So, based just on that information, as well as a couple of things that you yourself said while you were talking to us regarding noise and chaos, et cetera, I think that we need to go back to, you can plant all the arborvitae you want, but I think we need to go back to the plexiglass barrier.
Well, we, remember now that they're putting up walls that's going to be inside now, right?
If you remember that, I think in the part of the conversation when the landscape plan came into effect, that we also talked that the building in its own, own nature of the reconstruction of the building was the basis for the buffer of noise. It, it's very agreeable. I mean, it, I don't think you'd have, you'd have a very hard time to do a vegetated border that was going to be soundproof.
Do I have a poor concept of where this patio is located? Right here, correct?
On this side here, yes. It comes around the corner and wraps around where the silos are.
Okay, but you still have this side open to?
That is where the plantings are. That is where the arborvitae's and everything.
Okay, and his statement was just, it's not going to block all of the sound.
And where would it be?
So, my concern is what is going to be done to help mitigate some of the sound for the people that live in the neighborhood? That's the issue.
I think, I think we've addressed that issue on several occasions.
I don't think we have.
Well, I, I believe we have. I'm not, not, I'm not trying to tell you that maybe you're misunderstanding what I'm saying. But the creation of the building itself, which is going to be a solid year-round enclosed building.
It's going to be enclosed, completely enclosed?
Completely enclosed.
Roof?
Roof, windows, everything. It's going to be insulated.
So, it's not actually going to be an outdoor patio?
There is an outdoor patio.
There is an outdoor patio. This is the new building here
Okay.
that is going to be constructed. So, the majority of the patio is behind the new building that's being constructed. So, the added, added vegetated area is in the landscape buffer out here, which is an enhancement trying to also mitigate the amount of noise. It's, it's, it's a case where, and like I think we brought up, if, if there's ever any sign of any kind of outdoor music being played, it would be put over here, which if you're familiar with the site, I don't know if you've been out there or not. You kind of get a feel right now that this whole area over here, behind the silo area, is already blocked out by the building. So, everything we're pushing forward here is creating as much of a sound buffer to the outside area as we can do. Is it going to be soundproof? Absolutely not. I mean, it's, it's, it's impossible. We can't make a soundproof outdoor area. It's just, I, I don't think there's anybody who could. And the point of the matter is, is, and I think we've also been pretty cooperative and continue to, would, continue to be cooperative with the neighbors. If there were some concerns as far as noise and stuff, then they would be addressed. You know, we're open to, if there's a problem, the police come down, you know, tell you, you gotta be quiet or something, that's fine. But I think in, in all fairness to what we're trying to propose here, we're going above and beyond to try to work with the neighbors to control the noise and, and the site and all that, and everything goes on with it.
Yeah.
And also to control the amount of crowd that's outside. You know, they're all going to be contained within the area that's controlled of the liquor license.
Conceivably, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've done a good job answering a bunch of questions that we had. I think you've come a long way since the last meeting, but I, I feel like there's still some work you have to do.
I mean, if you want a definitive species on, on a plan, how tall we're going to plant them, that's fine. We can, we can easily put that together and coincide it with the, with our stormwater management plan and have it all there.
Yeah, that's what we asked for.
And as far as, and I agree 100% there, with conditions, if, if some of these species that were to die off, they should be replaced and they would.
Yeah, of course, it would be just behoove you to not have dead shrubs around your park, your fun patio area.
Any other suggestions?
Please, sure.
Tom Miranda, attorney for Fort Hill. One of the things that we might be able to do, because we really, I sense that there's some apprehension as to the effectiveness of whatever buffer is being proposed, is to have, have your review, have your approval and have a review date next year after we've gone through a season and have some type of a determination at that point, how effective is the sound mitigation that's been planted then? And then discuss it further. What more can be done if it's necessary? So, I'm trying to throw out a way to, because I, I think this is an unknown here in terms of the location of the, of the outdoor patio and, and what effect the brewery itself is going to have to mitigate or eliminate the noise going up Fort Hill Road. So, I throw that out as a way to, rather than, you know, try to hammer home something that we think will work, let's do what sounds reasonable and review it and maybe.
Our teeth is generally the, the approval of the special permit up to that point.
See, I'm sorry.
We don't really do policing so much.
I, I understand that, but this is, this is much site plan review process too. So, I'm trying to think, I'm trying to give some mechanism of how to deal with this issue.
Understood, thank you.
I want to kind of get a sense of the board here. It, it's seeming to me, and I think I'm in agreement too, that we need a little bit more information. Harry, are you, are you of the same line of thinking or?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have two concerns, I guess. We talked about the planting and I, I also would be uncomfortable moving forward without a stormwater plan to review and have the city engineer review it. I want to see the post and the pre and post-stormwater results.
Just the cals.
Just the cals, yeah. I want to see, I want to see to make sure that the existing stormwater system can handle the new flow. I think that's, I think that's not inappropriate to ask for. But, but also I have a question just from a legal, or from a, from a city, I don't know if it's legal or what, but. So, in our agenda, we say that this was going to be postponed until May. So, there aren't any residents here unless there are.
There are.
There are some residents? Okay, so, I mean, do, is there any sort of?
You know, this is, and, so, there has been some miscommunication between the applicant team and the city. I would like to say that there has been opportunities for pre-development review that you've not taken advantage of. That would have been not just the planning department, but the entire city staff, the fire department, the building department, city engineer. It was something that we offer that you didn't take advantage of, or maybe you didn't know about it, which is fine.
We met with all, we met with the fire department.
I understand that you met with all of them, but what I'm, I feel like, and I'm saying this as a city planner, is that I feel like that the applicant did not do some due diligence ahead of time, coming into the board, asking for them for opinions without coming to city staff. The application got dropped off and I asked, what is this? And Eric's response was, you're going to love it. I had no idea what this application was before I hit the board. I could have advised you that you needed to have a planting plan and these are the things that the board is going to be asking for and this is the stuff that, that, I could have given you some prep work so that it wouldn't have taken more time and that you wouldn't have to be continued three times or two times.
Eric, just one more thing.
So.
Hold on.
So, so, the point is, is that, you know, if the board feels like they need stormwater cals and they need a two-week continuation, I think that's fair. My, what was conveyed to me was Mark Reed, this, the engineer that was being hired by them, contacted me, said, we need to continue this to May 4th. I need to check with the applicants. They called the applicants. He said, I've spoken with Dave and Eric. They have also confirmed that we're continuing to May 4th. So, as far as I'm concerned, their engineer, who was Mark Reed, who is no longer their engineer, contacted me last week, confirmed that he confirmed with the applicants that they were continuing to May 4th. And that's why it got placed on the agenda as such.
So, we were expecting?
I was expecting a continuation tonight. I got called today saying we want, or whatever day it was. No, they're actually going to come and present information. So, there's a lot of miscommunication happening here and I'm getting frustrated because I feel like it's my job to make sure that this process goes smoothly for the applicants as well as the board.
Which we want. And one thing, Eric, I want to add too, is that at the last meeting, we continued with a list of things that we requested. One was the stormwater management, the review of some of the city engineer stuff, the plantings.
The lighting plan which they have.
Which you have. And you've come with bits and pieces of it, but not all, and said, is that okay? But the reason we continued the last meeting was to have those things. So, I mean, it's clear that it's not okay. We have to have those things to move forward in order to do our jobs with due diligence. I want you to succeed, but I have to maintain the city's safety first in part of this process. This process is that balance.
Yeah.
Right, fair enough. We, as a business, have been put under a time constraint and we have to have a paved parking lot by, I believe, December 2000?
The end of this year.
The end of this year. If we're not able, unfortunately, all right, Mark Reed, he kind of screwed. All right? He put us back in the mud. All right? If we're not able, unfortunately, this is going to be a process. It's not going to take a day, but it's going to take several months. So, if we are going to delay this substantially, I want to ask for an extension on our parking plan so that we
That's a fair request.
can do this next week.
I think that's a very fair request.
That's a fair request. That absolutely, but you, it just needs to be in writing that you're asking for an extension of the special permit. Eric, nobody's trying to screw you. You, I hope you understand that.
I understand that, I do, I do. And I'm really trying to be polite.
All right.
So, so, I guess just my, my, my follow-up here. I, I don't believe you. I know you do a very good job here and you're trying to best to satisfy a whole bunch of applicants that come in with different concerns and everything. I thought personally, I was following the proper channels by meeting with the building inspector, by meeting with the fire department, with meeting with the DPW and just trying to get their input.
Nobody met with me.
That's, that's a very, you're absolutely right.
Nobody met with me. It got dropped in my lap.
We did, we went, we went, we, what we thought at the time was the proper channels, meeting with the neighbors, getting their input as, as, as we went forward.
I think you guys should probably talk outside, outside of the meeting about that.
I mean, this is fine. It's, it's all good. It's all good and it's all going to be fine.
From my perspective, we asked for some things. We got a little bit, we didn't get enough. We need to have it to move forward.
Could we just have in, in detail what exactly we need?
And we can go through that again, absolutely.
Stormwater cals is what I heard.
Yeah.
And species on a planting.
And one, and I think one of the confusing things that maybe came back in, in the email from the, from Dan, the city engineer, was there was a comment made about as-built plans being presented to the Planning Board. So, there was a little bit of miss.
Once you're done.
Right there, which we understand.
Yeah.
But it, it's, it's, the way the email came through was the, the Planning Board would be looking for as-built plans at this point before they could close the hearing, which obviously we can't do.
Right.
So, as long as we're understanding there, I think Mr. Swanson is, is taking the helm really well here. He's going to get the, the work done. We're, we're, we're trying to expedite a lot of people here in a short span because we are under the going.
We all know you're working hard. We are not saying you're not working hard. You're doing a good job.
As far as the landscape.
We still need what we need.
Landscape design stuff, we will have a more detailed species list. And, and I think what Attorney Miranda's suggestion was would be valid. Maybe it's not anything through the Planning Board, but maybe it's something that could be part, you know, of a condition on our building permit that we make sure that that vegetated area is maintained, which is not only good for that, but it's also good for the brewery itself.
All right, Eric, you made a very reasonable request. Can we please spell out for you so that you can accomplish the goal, the specific things we need? Absolutely our desire. Let's start with the stormwater management plan delivered and completed. That's step one. I know you guys are working on that. I've heard that you'll have that ready in two weeks, which would seem to indicate for that component. Perhaps we could extend out only two weeks in, in order to, well, if you can't, we should know when we schedule our continuance. Another item that I'd asked for was if you read the city engineers' emails that have gone through to make sure that you're accommodating all those. That email came out, I'm sure you got it in our last meeting, and I'd like to hear your, your response to the points that were made there. So, there's item number two. You've given us the lighting information already that was presented up there. It was a little bit distant. Do you all feel that you had enough opportunity?
Well, it's all shown up on the plan as well that they provided to us, so.
And I believe if, if you don't have it, you should have the, the engineered details of the lighting from, the lighting engineer itself.
I don't have that.
It's these.
I don't have that. Was that on the Dropbox?
I'll scan them, no, they just delivered them tonight.
Okay, so we would not, okay.
I can scan them and put them into the Dropbox.
Yeah, you can put them in the Dropbox, that'd be good. Do you want to see that?
No.
We'll just all have them in the Dropbox.
Okay.
That looks like good information and we may have questions with the continuance about it, but overall, that's the information we require. Would you agree? Okay, good. Now, the only other thing that came up this meeting was the sound again. And do you want to add something additional plantings? Obviously more detail about the plantings, the landscape plan?
You know, there, there was an agreement to use plexiglass as a sound buffer. They agreed to that. Granted, they've moved the venue, but there's still going to be an outdoor portion where there's going to be outdoor entertainment. And I think the neighbors have a right to have as much sound mitigation as possible. I'm not saying that there's supposed to be no sound, but I think that there needs to be a significant effort more than just plantings that are going to take a few years to mature and fill in the gaps.
I see Eric wants to add something.
All right. I do believe that the plexiglass that we installed in the front of the porch does work.
No, no way.
Please wait, let him finish. I'll give you an opportunity to come up, I promise.
It will possibly work better in the combination with plexiglass and our varieties, but I do think it would be foolish to enclose the entire. think it would be foolish to enclose the entire porch because then the noise will just bounce this way and then that way, and it might actually be worse. So, I think that...
Not especially talking and closing the entire porch. I was thinking more of the, at least the side of it that faces the driveway and Fort Hill Road.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
All right. There's also, so, that, that, we also asked for clarification of the number of spaces. So, did you do this calculation, and you did confirm that 25 spaces is the maximum number of spaces you need?
Yes.
You did confirm that. Okay.
We added the, here's two more handicaps.
I did see that. You have the correct number of handicaps faces as well. So, you did clarify the number of parking spaces, which is...
And the plan that we are coming up with, there also is in addition to a further stall in the women's room. It's not necessary by the occupancy, but we're adding another bunch of stuff.
Okay.
Going back to the sound, based on what I'm hearing here, I think that we, we need to see the landscape plan.
Yep.
In addition to the stormwater management, that's going to be something we want. And then I would think very seriously, long and hard, about the kinds of questions you're being asked here, which will likely be asked again at the next meeting. And that planting plan needs to be in such a way that it's going to do whatever it can possibly do to resolve your questions unless you do want to go down the plexi path again. Okay?
Yep.
I'm, I'm going to, I want to finish a couple.
I just said while we're talking about plexiglass in here, I guess, because from a building standpoint, I guess I don't know really exactly what this, this plexiglass, where, where it's, where it's being, where your thought is where it should go.
Yeah. I'm actually, that's a good question.
At the last permit process that we went through, it was a condition that a plexiglass barrier be placed, I think it was six feet high, something like that. I don't remember the details.
On the east side of the porch.
And I'm sure you'll remember the details.
I'm willing to recreate that same scenario that we currently have with the plexiglass. I'm willing to recreate that on the porch that's been pushed out.
The, the northern, which, on, on the north?
There's a relocated porch on the edge.
Oh, the relocated porch. Got it, got it, got it. Yep.
So, it would be facing East Street.
So, it would just be like somewhere in here, somewhere?
Precisely.
Or perhaps double or triple that of the plantings where that area would be. I don't know, but I, I'm just putting it out there that it seems like it's likely that it's going to come up for discussion again.
But not in the patio area.
So, have a planned answer for it. Okay.
Okay. So, for, just on the new porch, not in the patio area. We're not talking about plexiglass in the patio.
Is there going to be music on the patio?
Just a moment.
Is there going to be music on the patio? That is, no, there will not be. There won't be music on the patio.
So, it's inside only?
Music will be inside and on the patio by the silos.
Not, yeah, not on the front porch.
Front porch.
It will be on the patio.
All right. There was a language confusion.
That's the point.
Not on the porch, but on the patio.
Right.
But the point of the plexiglass and the sound mitigation is for your outdoor entertainment.
Right.
Okay.
I, I was a little overwhelmed. I apologize.
All right. Can I, can I give it an opportunity to let some of the public speak about this?
Yeah, please. Please do.
Because I think they want to speak. I'm going to give you one second, please. You, sir, in the back. You're next.
Bob, enter, scare, fifteen Fort Hill Road. Question for Eric. When we were at the meeting four weeks ago, and we talked, you, you stated that the music, the band will never be outside. And now you're talking, having entertainment on a patio on the west side of the building. But you said the music, the, you said, "Trust me, the band will never be outside." And now here, four weeks later, you're changing it all around again. When are you going to stop lying to us?
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to handle that right now. Not only at the meeting last two weeks ago, did we discuss this openly, because I brought it up several times, how the building was going to buffer the sound on the patio.
Let him finish.
Can I finish? And I also stated to that point that if there was any kind of music outside, it would be tucked around by where the silos are now. We not only had that discussion at that meeting, we also had that discussion when we sat down in the brewery and talked about it. We did. Well, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm going to disagree 110% because we did have the discussion.
Okay. So...
Part of the reason we developed the patio and everything on that side, and we talked about, we talked about trees and everything out there, was to minimize any kind of sound from either the crowd out there or any kind of music that was out there.
Thank you. Did you want to speak?
Yes, please. So, just before the next person speaks, you can come on up. But we weren't at that meeting in the brewery, so anything that happened at that brewery has nothing to do with us. So, we are, we can only, I, I understand, but what I'm saying to the residents and anyone here is we can only go by what we hear at these meetings. And at the meeting two weeks ago, we did hear that music would happen on the patio.
Okay. Joyce Petraskevich, fifteen Fort Hill Road. They sent us a letter dated February 24th about the project that they want to do. And in this letter, they said, "To accomplish this, the brewery proposes to enclose the area occupied by the porch that is frequently used by music bands in order to contain music in just the brewery."
Okay. Do you want to share that?
Would you like a copy of this letter?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So, there's clearly some confusion about what's going to happen there. But what's important to us, what we're going off of is you're saying that there is a piece of the porch in which you're planning on doing outdoor music.
No.
The patio.
Patio, patio. But it's an, it's an outdoor, an outdoor area. That the proposed mitigation, sound mitigation for that is trees, that it will never be full proof. That those, these are the facts that we're operating on that have been stated here. Am I right?
Well, I'd also like to make sure that the buildings itself be used as sound mitigation because that's going to mitigate sound far better than anything else.
It, it will. You're right. I mean, it will.
So, so, this is going to come up as an issue, and we're going to continue to discuss it. I think the plexiglass barrier may come up. If you have some different design or other things, please consider that when you come back to us in two weeks so that we can best be able to move through this in a way that's going to work.
Right. Right. And, and I mean, maybe one of those suggestions you might have, and we talked about this at the last meeting, is that there is no congregation out in this front porch. And that's what we talked about last time, because one of the things I believe that the residents complained about is a lot of people are congregating out here in the front. And to put this outside patio or on the back, that's where they can be, and then the sound doesn't travel down to Fort Hill Road. So, maybe that might be something you come to us with a proposal. So, you know, there might be some ways that we can make the residents happy and make you happy by some proposals to mitigate sound beyond just some shrubs.
And I want to be clear about what you're saying. Are you suggesting people trafficking?
People, yeah. People going out, people, pedestrians stand out there with their beer and smoking a cigarette out on the front porch. Maybe they go to that back patio instead, and you, you make sure that no one's hanging out out there.
Route comes.
First of all, you can't smoke and drink beer in a public setting at the same time.
Okay.
Secondly, if we could translate that statement into a clear bullet point, because there's both ambiguity on both sides, and that statement leads to another discussion. If we could make that a strong bullet point so that we could strongly address it, okay, and have a solution for you, because right now, I'm not sure if I understand the question.
So, it was just a suggestion, and the issue, the bullet point is sound mitigation for outdoor music remains a problem. Please resolve it.
Right.
Bullet point finished. That was a suggestion. Keep people away from areas where it's going to cause a problem. So...
Well said. Thank you.
Do you want to come on up, Bert?
Bert Derby, 11 Fort Hill Road. Eric, you're not the only person who's confused. I'm now confused. There seems to be more than a little ambiguity. That letter is not ambiguous. That was the letter sent by the brewery in pre, in preparation for the meeting that we appreciated holding. And it states very clearly that music will, the entertainment will remain within the brewery. Now, they may have evolved that point orally, but that is clear, unambiguous. The point, the question I want to raise at this point, no, let me, let me comment on that further. One of the problems the neighbors have had ongoing from the beginning of this project is that we thought we understood clearly what was being proposed and what would happen, only to discover that what then eventually happened was not what we had originally heard. That is the reason for the unhappiness, the distrust, and even the anger, which is often directed at the brewery, because we believe that whether intentionally or not, we have been misled about what was going to happen. And, and not, not just that plans change because laws change and opportunities change, but that even within that context, we have not been told truthfully what was being considered and what was being proposed. So, something that appears to us to be unambiguous in writing then becomes ambiguous in oral presentation, and the next thing we know, it's something else entirely. So, I want to come back just as one example, and it concerns the plexiglass shield. Is that still a requirement, or is that not a requirement at this point?
The new special permit, it would have to be re-added in as a condition, and it's up for discussion. So, right now, there is no requirement for the new special.
Okay. Look, so, then I have a couple of questions. Do I understand that the brewery is now proposing that there would be entertainment outside in the new patio area, but that the plexiglass shield, if it existed, would be in front of the porch, not the area from which the music is emanating? This doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. If, if the purpose of the plexiglass shield is to indeed shield the neighbors from excessive noise, you would expect the plexiglass shield to be placed between the, the music, the noise, and, and the neighbors. That would require that it be placed somewhere in proximity to the patio. So, I'm hoping we can clarify that ambiguity. If there's to be a shield, and under the previous permit, there was to be a shield, it is, since we are creating a new patio in a new place, that shield should move to protect the neighbors from the patio from which emanates the music.
Okay.
I hope that that will be clarified.
Okay.
Thank you, Bert. Please come on up.
I have a question for Bert. Bert, what would you like to see on our plan? What, what is, what do you disagree with? If you could, because we're going to, we're going to make it happen for you.
You're asking where the plexiglass would go?
What, what do you, I, I, what, what would you like to see so that we don't have to fight anymore?
So, if there was an entertainment, it would be back in this corner over here, behind the silos.
I think the easy answer is keep the music inside.
It would be really nice to have the music right by the silos. It's on the back of the building. It's pointed away from East Street. It's pointed away from the, from the neighbors. It's blocked by buildings. It's blocked, it's, it's currently blocked by the current building.
Okay.
It's going to be blocked by the additional building, and it's going to be blocked by the plantings. Okay? The other breweries are able to play music outside. Why can't we?
Fair enough.
I guess my question, and I know this plexiglass seems to be confusing a lot of people here. And I, and I'm kind of getting it, and I'm trying, I, I guess I try to like to clear up as much as we can tonight just so we can move.
Appreciate it.
And, and once again, I know, I don't know if you can see it, but this is that area where the patio is going to be on the side of the porch. The new building is going to, is going to extend out from the existing building 24 feet. That's going to be a completely enclosed building, insulated, glass. It's going to be a soundproofed ass. Everything else is in the building. The existing front porch is being proposed to be reattached to the front of that for the aesthetics and an entry point into the building, a covered entry point to come into the building. So, therefore, in combination with the landscaping plan of planting along the sides of, of where we're entering into the brew, into that area, if, if it's, if it's deemed that plexiglass would be another sufficient buffer on the open side of the porch that's adding, so you'd have another 10 feet of, of a closure, and then your landscape things up. I don't think it is physically possible to do any more than that as a builder.
Understood.
So, you're saying, and I think Eric already stated, you'd be willing to, to put that barrier in place. Is that right?
I think Eric has stated very much so. We're willing to do pretty much what we need to do.
If, if you guys feel that it wouldn't be noise that would be from music that would be blocking, that, that plexiglass would be blocking, that would simply be pedestrian talking, but if that is something that you deem necessary?
And that's because the music is facing down out toward, from the silos out the other way, not toward the road, but perpendicular to it?
That's not, that, that plexiglass, in my, in my personal opinion, I have no engineering or whatever degree, okay, but that probably won't prevent any sort of music noise because it's going to be on the backside of the brewery. There's so many other things that are mitigating that. That's just going, that's going to be up there for your bureaucracy. All right?
So, to...
If you, if you, if you guys want it up there?
Okay.
We can do it.
Thank you.
So, just to be, I just want to show you, there's no scale bar on this plan, so I'm sort of winging it, but it looks to be that, that the, the length of the silos and beyond is about 35 feet. So, it looks like between where the silos are located into the front of the, the front of the enclosed tasting room is probably around, I'm going to guess, like 55 feet.
It's 65 feet from the edge.
I understand, but I'm trying to measure from here to here.
Okay.
And I don't have a scale bar. So, I'm basically taking this 35 and then flipping it this way to see, and then using that. So, I'm going to say it's about 55 feet.
Close, 55, 60.
Just to give you, just to give you a sense of spatially in your head, 55 feet from the edge of the building back to the silos. So, it's probably somewhere between 35, 40 feet, the distance from where the, they're proposing to put the bands in between the silos to the edge of the building, just to give you a sense of what that is.
A significant distance buffer.
I would think so. I mean...
Okay.
What's the, what's the noise that's happening now in the front porch that is the issue? Is it people just hanging out, having, just talking?
Right now, it's, all right, because we, we screwed up, all right? In our original business plan, we did not understand the flow of people. Okay? Now, we understand the flow of people. And I myself am deeply concerned because, like, we don't advertise, yet they still come. All right? What am I going to do? Stand at the road and say, "Don't come up here"? All right? I really do have safety issues that haven't really been addressed. Like, and we're trying to address them, but...
So, that doesn't answer my question. So, why?
I don't think, I don't think it was a screw-up on the, on the fact or anything right. And it's, it is, it's a fact that the, the craft brewing industry has just grown exponentially since it started here.
Yeah, yeah. I, I love Fort Hill. It's a great place. I go.
People go out and they try different beers and different...
Don't comfort yourself out, please.
I'm sorry.
So, what's the sound problem?
I've gone once.
The, the problem is that it's, the tasting room was originally designed, when we did the design concept of this, was following under the guidelines of simply that, a tasting room. There was no pouring permits. There was none of these things existing. So, when the original building was planned, it was planned around that and that only. So, the anticipation of crowds that are coming and waiting to get in was never anticipated.
So, that's...
So, that's what the problem is. You're congregating out there. The concept of building this new area for them is now to bring people inside the building, to get them outside, get them from being outside.
To get them inside.
Get them inside.
Move them over to the porch.
Have a secondary bar to serve the, the people as they come and go. Have the outside area for people to go out, to get outside after they get...
That's away from the residential area.
I think the one thing that keeps getting missed here is we're not coming forward saying that we're going to start opening the brewery seven days a week from 10:00 a.m. till midnight every day. It's, the hours are staying the same. You know, the way the production brew house is set up, it's set up for production brewery, and there's very little time. Believe it or not, the tasting room can become an inconvenience to the brewing scale. Just the power issues, brewery going on when things are going on. So, this is trying to accommodate the people that are going to come irregardless. If we don't get a, a special permit and do those, they're still coming.
And I get the sense that you guys are trying to do it right, which we very much respect, and, and, and I think we can.
Even after the pensions may be tight, we're still going.
I think we should try to get back to the bullet point lists. You've got it in the back. You've explained to us what you're doing for mitigation. At, at our next meeting, I, I think we should touch on it again just to make sure. So, have your best plan ready to put forward. One other thing you mentioned too is we asked for a scale.
Yeah. Well, that was in the engineers', the, the city engineers' list of items.
Do you have a stormwater plan? I think that's what that...
Well, it'll, it needs to be on it. Yeah, it needs to be on, so, when you reduce these, one inch equals 30 feet doesn't mean anything. So, you know, we, we need to have a bar scale on here that will actually work with, and, and that hap, that's on every drawing.
All right. I'll pay my hourly, another $150 an hour.
Well, it's...
Should've been done right the first time.
You know, Eric, if you want to run a business, you've gotta do the permitting the right way. I'm sorry, and I know that this is hard, but-
We did submit, according to the planning board, we submitted the proper scale. We have this larger printout that is according to construction dot.
Okay, so we have the scale? Is that what's being said?
This is the scale.
Okay, just let it go. Let it go. Let it go. Let it go. It's not worth arguing about.
This is a scale drill.
Okay, is there anything else that the board can think of that we need to?
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes, please.
I'm still confused. If they come forth with a plan involving a Plexiglas shield, I guess they can place it wherever they choose to propose it. But it strikes me that their principal argument thus far has been that the extension of the new building will in fact provide the primary sound shield. Certainly it will provide some sound shielding.
Yep.
Particularly from the hayfield. The hayfield hasn't complained recently. The neighbors, on the other hand, are across Fort Hill Road. Therefore, it would seem to me at least, that the proper place for a Plexiglas shield would be parallel to Fort Hill Road, running from the corner of the porch to wherever the road is at that point. Thereby, the most effective placement for the shield, if the purpose of the shield is to prevent sound from reaching Fort Hill Road, that would be the best location for it.
Or some denser planting, or, these are all ideas I recommend you speak to the applicant about to bring to us in two weeks.
So you're saying in this area is where you're proposing Plexiglas? This is facing, this is, this is the dr, road coming up. This is where the-
This is Fort Hill Road?
I think we need to, yeah, I think we need to move on.
I'm suggesting-
It's, guys.
Yeah, this, that's-
Have a seat.
That, yeah.
Okay, so we do want to discuss it some more at the next meeting. We've put it on, we've put it on your radar, I hope, so that you know it's something we want to talk about and make sure we get through. Is there anything else that you guys think needs to be added to this bullet point list that we're talking about here? No?
I think that covers it.
Then let's-
Can we just review it just so we have it one more time?
Yeah.
So stormwater cals was one thing I heard.
Yes. Plant, the plantings, the, um, landscaping plan?
Planting, planting plan with species and size. I mean, that's more.
That's exactly right.
Okay, and the third was the location of the, like the, what, you wanted like a sound plan or like a-
Outside sound mitigation plan. I don't know, the plan is, I just want to know what he's gonna do about it. It doesn't have to be some massive plan, okay? I just, we, we need to have an understanding of how the sound is being mitigated outside.
Sound from the, from the patio.
From the outside patio.
From the patio.
That's it. Not from inside.
And the porch?
Well, that, it doesn't, that's-
Supposedly not going to be entertainment on the porch.
Okay.
So from the patio.
From the patio. Forget about the scale. The lighting, I feel, was handled. What did I miss? Did I miss anything? I think that covered it. Okay, three points. I mentioned the city engineers' points. I'd like to, here.
Yeah, the email, yeah, because I don't have that in front of me, so I can't go through those again either, but-
Eric, I have it. Do you want it?
Yeah, just to take a look.
We just want to make sure that you're responding to the comments. It doesn't have to be sophisticated.
Is this the secondary response from the town engineer?
No.
It's the only one that I've seen. It's dated March twenty-first.
Okay, so those four items, and that's it.
This is the secondary that he-
And we've been talking about-
Well, it wasn't, there, it was basically just a discussion about the SWIP plan being submitted after.
You haven't really heard what the board thinks yet. Just keep that in mind.
I'm sorry, I, I-
We've been talking a lot about wanting to know what you're planning to do, what the results are, but we, you haven't really, we haven't talked about what we think yet. So keep that in mind. All right.
Agreed.
So, uh, does that sound good? We need to set up a new date. How long will it take you to put all this together?
I, I just have one question. We just, we were talking about this sound plan. We are all in a room together, okay? What would you guys like to see from us? Okay, let's, let's, let's just be like, we can do it. We have, it's just dirt out there. What do you guys want to see from us? And how can we do it? Because we're gonna do it in our, with the, the, the five of us are gonna sit down together and we're gonna come up with our plan. Okay, and then there's going to be an argument that this is not good enough. We are all here together in a room.
All right, I respect you're looking for some help so that you can get this.
Right, I'm just looking for clarification.
And I'm keen on trying to provide that help. So really quickly, in which direction are, are the nearest neighbors? From, from that-
I think, I'll make it real quick, because I know it's getting late. Mr. Thurber came up and he said that we were just talking about doing, doing Plexiglas in my right, in the front facing the area
Yes.
out towards Fort Hill Road.
Sorry, I can't see that far.
This is, this is the area that's gonna be facing Fort Hill Road.
This is the front porch?
This is the front porch.
This is the new addition?
This is the new addition.
This is the outdoor patio?
This is the outdoor patio. So this is the area that's already being proposed with vegetation in it now. We can, we can put a much denser pack of vegetation in here in, in front of this. Plexiglas is, is only gonna be four to eight, four to eight feet high.
Plexiglas is gonna be-
Sounds gonna roll over.
Denser vegetation.
We can do a denser vegetation plan in there.
That's what I hoped you'd come for with this today, so that this wouldn't be an issue. But we didn't do the landscape plan.
Okay, we will come forward.
I want that to be dense and thick.
We will come, it'll be, yes, it'll be a forest.
Top to bottom, within legal limits.
Well, so the zoning-
Fortunately for tonight, we have Mr. Campadelli here from Pioneer Landscapes who's been talking to my son, so maybe they'll, maybe they'll come up with a, maybe they can work.
There is screen, there is screening language in the zoning in regards to buffering. I'm not saying it applies to this specifically, but maybe potentially you could use that as a guidance document.
And use Jessica as a resource.
I think that's a great idea.
Section six point five. Those are sort of the standards for screening and buffering. Section six point five, already listed out there. Okay? Now, I'm not saying that this is totally applicable, but you could use this as a guidance document, okay? I think, you know, with my landscape architecture background, I'd like to just make sure that the plant materials are gonna survive, that-
As we do.
You know, as you, you know, you don't want to have to end up replacing them next year because you planted them too close and, you know, they're not being watered or whatever. So, you know, I think that having some dense vegetative buffer, some of it being evergreens would work.
We will show that there is an irrigation system that for auto-water purposes and all.
It's, it's on you to make sure that it's watered, you know.
We're gonna go the whole, we're gonna go the whole distance and more.
It, it's on you to make sure that it's-
But the, but the whole distance just changed.
No, it didn't.
The question was, where did we want the screen?
That's what I asked you.
Right, and I showed you. And now, what, what are you thinking at this part you're going to do about a screen?
The screen is the vegetation.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I was talking, I was talking about a Plexiglas.
We're not talking about Plexiglas anymore unless someone else wants it.
Plexiglas is not gonna serve a purpose for sound mitigation.
It really doesn't.
Oh, really?
Yes, really.
I, I think that-
Which acoustic engineer told us that?
Okay.
Well, how big of a Plexiglas wall would you like to build?
All right.
We need to get this under control a little bit more.
I'm gonna, please, please return to your seats. Thank you. Please return to your seats.
You're proposing.
All right.
Wait, 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 wait. We need to have, we need to have it directed to the board, not to one another, please.
Have a seat, please.
Thank you.
Please return to your seats.
Direct to the board, not to each other.
Sorry about that.
We did the best we could to try and give you concrete information there. That's what the board's gonna be looking for. Anything else?
No.
We need to know how soon you'll have this stuff ready to bring back.
We'd like to see back on the agenda for the next meeting on the eighteen.
Okay, and that date, Jessica?
It's the, uh-
April eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue the hearing to April eighteenth?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Well, seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And against? Sentenced? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
I'd like to apologize to the board for the inappropriate arguments of some part here. Does anyone know what Jesse meant?
Uh, he might be in the back schoolroom. I don't know.
You wanna make sure you've got a scale plan?
No, we don't. I have, there's no scale bar. I think that's the point of the, is the board is saying is that it says one inch equals thirty, but it was drafted as a large scale. So when it gets shrunk down, I'm using this to try, I'm trying to measure using this and using, you know, looking at existing lines and then trying to figure it out. So if there was a scale bar and I'm on the fly, I can just grab a piece of paper and use a scale bar.
Can we give you something of a full scale?
Sure, if you want to.
It'd be a lot easier for you, I would think.
It would be easier, but again, you know, it's-
It's twenty.
Obviously, you want to get a scale.
Just makes a copy.
Oh, it just throws it off.
This is totally lively.
This is not blue. We can't talk about it anymore. Sorry.
Something to you, but we don't want to hear. That's all.
The next-
It's closed. The discussion's closed. Sorry. Thank you.
On to our next item.
Get it done the first one.
I can take up a copy of that letter tomorrow that I gave you?
Yes, you want it, um, you want to take it back and just, you, or?
I can, you can take the copy and I'll come back and pick it up tomorrow sometime.
Um, I'm trying to think of what my schedule is tomorrow. Okay, I will do that. I will do that. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Moving on. New business, request for site plan approval, fifteen Industrial Parkway, Brian Campadelli.
Hello.
Is that you?
Hey.
Come on up.
Yes, please.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, no worries. I'm on the license commission in Northampton, so I kinda get it.
Not your first public hearing?
Yeah.
All right, so you want to give us a general overview of what's going on here, what you're trying to do?
Yeah, so, um, basically, we have a, um, really well-known, um, daycare center there in the building. That's, um, quite popular and, and it's, um, growing and, and has a need of expansion. As do I for, um, offices for my bill, my, uh, business as well. So what we're proposing to do is work within the limits of the, um, the setbacks to expand, uh, you know, for that business, to add two more classrooms. And then also to add, um, some offices for myself at Pioneer Landscapes, I think. All right. There, there was another, so the Board of Health, um, kindly reached out to me about the, uh, there's like a wood boiler on there. Scratch that. That's not, that was from year two thousand. Our original plan, that's not happening.
Okay.
And, um, there was supposed to be a pole barn in there and it's not, and we're gonna forego that. If I want to do a pole barn later, then I'll come revisit you kind folks.
Yes, please.
Do you guys need one of these?
I've got one, thank you.
I've got it, thanks.
Uh, regarding the office use. Uh, it says that it, it's going to be used for office. Can you tell me a little bit more about what that is?
For office?
Yeah.
Space? Okay, so right now, as you can well imagine, in a landscape company, I've got my equipment in a building and I have a mezzanine and that's where my office is, so I've got my office manager and my managers and myself in there with the noise and the welding, you know, smoke and this, that and the other. Not to mention that we do probably have, in fact, today we had two clients come in today. So we probably have a dozen people over the course of a year that come in there. And it's, it's kinda like when you go to an automobile shop or whatnot, you really don't want folks just walking through. Could be grease or tools or whatever to trip on, so it's a hazard, so. Plus, after twenty-eight years in business, I'd like to have a nice professional setting where I can go over blueprints for people and have them come in and really discuss some things and put some presentations together. And I really just don't have that, so.
Okay, I, I have a comment that it would be an accessory use to the building and I just wanted to make sure, because I know it's owned industrial, I wanted to make sure that was in use. It's fine though.
So what's there right now in the space?
Uh, Pioneer Landscapes and all about.
No, so I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, so I'm looking at an aerial map and it actually has a structure there already. Is there something there now? I'm sorry, I haven't been there yet.
That's okay.
I think it's a playground.
Yeah, it looks like.
Yeah, it's just a playground. So that's all, just wood chips.
Okay.
And so that, but that's where the building's gonna go, right? And then it looks like the playground's gonna go along the side?
The back of the building, yeah.
Okay.
So that, there's part of this is still going to, so this back part, so if you drew a line straight here, that's gonna exist and the playground's gonna come further out in the back. And this would just be new area.
Gotcha.
I have another comment that the plan shows classroom infant is one of the expanded uses.
Right.
What, what's going on there?
She needs, she needs a infant in a toddler room, so as an addition. So in other words, there's, um, there's constant waiting lists for people to get their kids into daycare and the biggest need is infant. And, um, so with that, you need the support of a toddler room, you know, so that they can transition well. And then the other rooms are all kind of subsequent ages after that.
Okay. Uh, so there is a full daycare going on there?
That's correct.
I got a question. Is this gonna require more, uh, room for parking or is it gonna require another bathroom, that type of thing?
It's only gonna, um, the parking, no. We have more than enough parking spots for the expansion of, of the building. The bathrooms, so what the state requires for an infant room is it has to have water. And then I think every forty kids has to have a facility. So there will be, uh, one other bathroom. And of course, in my office, I'm certainly gonna have a bathroom because I'm not gonna make my office manager, everybody walk to the other end of the building. So we're gonna try and do that as efficient as possible and kind of back the wall, you know, back them up against each other on a shared wall.
There are no parking requirements for the, oh, encyclopedia of all wisdom and knowledge?
Me, over here, who are you talking to? I'm just trying to make hesitant.
While she, while she looks for, let me ask you a parking question. What's shown on the plan here, is this what's actually already on the lot for parking spots? It is? And is it paved and painted? I can't quite tell from the aerial photo, that's what I'm just-
Yeah, it needs to be sealed and painted again, but they are, the lines are there. In fact, it's colored for, you know, different, various reasons. And there's handicap parking and the whole bit.
There are, there are spaces that are marked handicap? I didn't see any on the plan that were marked.
Yes.
Okay, which ones are those?
There actually are two shown.
Are there?
There's only two shown though.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see those two by the sidewalk.
Yeah, they're right, right here is the entrance of.
And you said there's a third one too?
There's two right there, but, um, there can be, these right here can be added to, and then you got, you know, actually, I'm sorry, the one right next to it.
Okay, so those ones that are, one, two and three?
Yep.
Yeah, because that three is not handicap.
It's a little small.
Yeah. The number three is not, um, right on the code.
Lot size, number three.
Is it too small? Is that what you're saying?
Doesn't have a, it doesn't have a, um, it doesn't have a, uh-
Like the button next door?
Yeah, it's got a, yeah, to have a, a, a yellow slash space where the, they can unload.
And is three a required handicap number?
It's in between one and two, but there's a three next to it. I figured that was your third, but that doesn't have a-
Oh, no, I'll, I would have to make that obviously. Yeah, I mean, so when I repaint, that's something like that.
Okay.
Probably have to eat up the spot to make enough room for it, so one spot down.
Jessica, do we have an answer?
Um, I'm, I'm trying to follow you guys. I'm trying to do two things at once and it's not serving me well.
Okay. The square footage for this, while Jessica's looking for that, it's a three, thirty-two hundred and sixty-four. Is that all on one, this one floor? Or is there a second floor with more square?
Two-story.
Two stories.
So I think if you go to the next plan-
So this is twenty-one ninety?
Yeah, so it's, you go to the, you know, see how it's, uh, no, no, it just shows, this is the more addition.
Okay.
This.
So the second floor is just a big open space?
This right here and this building is, is existing. This would be new. This right here and this building is existing, this would be new.
So this 30, so it's 3200 square foot addition, so.
But then it says per floor, right?
Yeah, I don't, is it per floor?
It's got the little, in the small print on the big plan, it looks like it says 3264 square foot slash floor.
Okay.
I'm using my phone.
So it's actually a 60, okay, got it. Yeah, I see it.
So I think, but then when I, when we look at the plan of the internal stuff, like the first floor, it says 2190 square foot, but I don't know if that's just the Pioneer offices?
There, just this piece?
Yeah, 'cause the other two.
Yeah, 'cause this is all new too though. It has all this.
So that's additional.
So maybe that does get you to the 3264.
Inside of walls.
Proposed two square.
Right, the math doesn't add up for me.
If you look at the architectural rendering, rendering.
Yeah.
Where is it? I got too many pieces of paper in here. Here it is. I mean, it looks like it's two-story, right?
Yeah, it's definitely two-story.
It's definitely two-story.
Yeah, it definitely is.
Where are the?
So the question is that, that number is the square, right? Is it per floor or is it?
Ziggy's math is off, is what we're saying here.
Well.
Well, or it just includes these other rooms. So this, this could be the 29, 2190 for Pioneer offices, but it doesn't, but you, when you add in the four of the stories, the last rooms, that might get you to the 3264 square foot per floor.
Maybe the 992 square feet on this is the, is the extra.
But it still adds up 100 and something short.
Oh, it doesn't even, that doesn't even get to 32?
No, it's 31.
Gives us a third number?
Pretty much.
It's close.
So yeah, so just wanna make sure, see what the actual square footage is here.
I'll have that addressed tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, it's got all the measurements on here.
Do you want the parking answer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was for childcare facility, family daycare home, that's what you were asking for?
Yeah.
So it's one per two employees plus one off-street passenger loading place for each, for every eight students.
And how many students are we talking about for the daycare?
Oh, I think 60.
60?
60, yeah.
All right.
So one spot per eight?
And how about how many employees?
It says an off, off-street passenger loading place, so that doesn't necessarily say.
It doesn't or so.
A parking space, but I guess it's.
That's what it is.
And what did you, what would you say for employees, you said?
I mean, I'm guessing she has like eight, I would.
You think there's eight?
I don't know.
Okay.
Can we get some harder numbers?
Yeah, I mean, I'll definitely text her tomorrow and get that. I'm flying out tomorrow morning, but I will be in touch with her and then I'll, I'll reach out to you as well.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
And then how many people?
Employees and the students.
Yeah, I mean, Jessica, do you know when this image, was this the 2000?
I pulled it off the assessor, so I, they update it fairly frequently.
Okay.
I guess my concern is, and this is Chris with the Air Wetlands Conservation Commission, but the, the 200-foot buffer line on this plan and then there's a bunch of cars being, it looks like trucks and stuff being parked back there, so it looks like there's stuff being parked off the pavement line.
Yeah.
So this is showing the end of pavement and then it looks like there's a bunch of stuff being parked on the buffer for the wetland.
Okay.
So that's just something to.
Yeah, so I wonder what I have to do with that. I wonder if I have to go vote to zoning and ask them for a.
You mean conservation?
Conservation, yeah.
And.
'Cause you're.
Who handles the buffer zones? Is that conservation?
Yes. Am I right, Chris, on that?
Yep.
'Cause with a special permit that I can get within 100 feet, correct? I mean, 'cause it's not, it's not building anything, it's just.
Usually it's 100 feet, isn't it?
Right, that's why I don't know why the 200-foot notation is there, so.
Me either.
That was, oh, you know what, maybe the laws changed because that was back in 2000. This is the original site map.
Well, there is a, there is a scale on this one though, so.
Yeah, all right.
We could actually.
Well, it depends on the, the type of wetland or water bodies. Some of them do require 200 feet. If it is, if it is.
A brook.
A.
It says brook.
Yeah, so there might be a 200 feet. Yeah, so it's riverfront, which is 200 feet.
Yeah.
So.
It's actually, what do they call the kind that dry up?
Intermittent?
There's a special word that they used.
That's it.
Yeah.
I'm telling you.
No, no.
I didn't think that was.
So, yeah, it looks like you do have activities within the buffer zones that will require.
That's not the jurisdiction of this board necessarily.
But it will require Conservation Commission approval to continue using that space.
Well, also if that equipment is parked in some of these spots that are designated as parking spots all the time, then they probably don't get credit for that as a spot when we're doing the math, right?
Well, they're not because they're moved out. They're moved out first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, my concern is that I, on this drawing, there are, almost all the spots are full with the exception of some right up the very front. So I mean, I guess, you know, and I don't see these spots in the back at all. Looks like there's just.
Who's typically parking there during the day right now?
Just employees.
Employees for Pioneer Valley, or Pioneer and for the current daycare?
Yeah.
But the board should note that there's also new parking spaces on the other side of the existing building known on the site plan that are not on the.
That's what I was just noting, it's not on the draw, on the map. So I mean, I mean, I think that's great to have them over there and I think when, you know, as part of this, you, we will be wanting to make sure that this is all paved and this is all, you know, all the spots are.
Repainted, yeah.
Painted, yeah. Yeah.
So those are, this, the ones on the other side of the building, it says covered employee parking?
Yeah.
Are those spots there right now?
Yeah, I mean, they use them, but it's gravel, it's not paved.
Okay.
So we use that for Pioneer.
Okay.
Parking to leeway for the daycare center more.
Where's that?
It's on the top here, it's these spots, but the very, very high prints is covered. Is it, is it under the, is it in this aerial photo? Is it underneath that roof? Like, is it part of that building?
I don't know if you could see 'cause of that shadow.
But it basically is right along there?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's covered, so those spots are there, they're just.
They're about as long as the car, that shadow, it's weird.
Looks like grass to me in the aerial.
It completely looks like grass.
But it's covered, so it's underneath the roof of that building, apparently.
Well, I don't, I don't buy that.
Take, take one of the cars on the other side, visually move it in your head to the other side of the building.
Yeah.
I still think it would stick out.
Yeah.
What's the date on that?
That's what I was asking too. I don't know what the date is on this. But I mean, if you have them, if you're gonna, if you're, whether you have them or not, if you're gonna propose to have them and you need to repave it and, or reseal it, I mean, and, and, and mark those lines out, that would work.
Yeah, okay.
You just have to make sure that they're available, accessible.
So I have to get a number of students, number of employees?
How many employees was a hard number for how many spots you need?
Yeah, how many employees do you have too? Do you know?
Um, full-time, we have probably 11, you know, or somewhere in there.
Okay, and then you have part-time too?
Yeah, once in a while, they come in and.
And are they, are they all working at the same time? Are they in shifts or how does that work?
It depends on the work.
Okay.
Now, some of the kids work in, after school, they come in at 2:30, 3:00 and then they work for a few hours, go out weeding.
Yeah. So what's the most number of like employees you would have parking there at one time?
Well, we're never ever full out of that, so how many spots are there in this area? These are basically my employees' cars right here and down to about 1, 2, 3, 4, so five of these cars and then these cars are my employees.
What about these doubled up cars? Are these other, also your employees that double up parking?
Those are my trucks and stuff like that that we use for the business.
And so those are out in the morning and gone all day?
Most of them, yeah.
Yeah.
I got a question here.
That's, that's grass and such.
I might have to ask a question. You came here for a special permit or a permit back, what, about five or six years ago?
2010.
Yeah, we were gonna build a building on the other side.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, just to clarify, now, how many, how many parking spots were you supposed to require back then?
I mean, I don't know, I didn't look that up.
Remember what it was?
The architect assured me that we're covered.
I have the site plan downstairs, but.
Oh, the, well, the question that I have is how many, have you added parking spots to this place since then?
These ones will be new.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, those in the back probably, yeah.
So it'd be, it'd be pretty simple looking at our old permit and saying, if he hasn't added any to that, then we'd know exactly how many he has.
Yeah, if you look at.
Addition, it just says the additional parking will be added along the northern side of the existing building.
There's no hard number there, so.
Right.
So if you look at the square foot of that building.
Is that on that, is that on page?
That was proposed.
Simple times.
Basically taken out in the front instead of out there because somebody, in their wisdom, told me that when you do separate buildings on a lot, you make it work less. Because it kind of takes up, like, determines use instead, so it'd be harder to sell.
Future.
You want that?
Okay, so. I don't know what the number is.
Well, it's gonna, for the parking spaces, yeah, we're gonna need to know.
Yeah, I wish Ziggy was here.
It doesn't say. It just says additional parking will be added.
Yeah.
I have the site plan downstairs. I can go down three floors if you really want.
Well, no, I don't think that's gonna help because you need to know what the new occupants are gonna be.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, so I think if you can get us a number for employees and students at the daycare and employees that you have parking on a regular basis. Yeah, yeah, employees and students in the proposed expansion.
Right.
If there's 18 extra students, you need X amount of drop-off zones.
Yeah, if, like, if there's 60 kids now, but she was expecting to go to 100, that's the, 100 is the number we need. Well, yeah.
Right, but we need that new number, not the number she currently has, but what she expects to have.
Number of daycare assistants she's gonna have in total with her. And confirm the square footage of the building.
Yeah.
And then let us know how you're gonna modify the parking for the extra handicap spot.
Yeah, when he did that, I looked at it all and said, there's plenty of spots there, so.
And if you.
It's very possible there are. We just need to confirm that number.
Yeah, okay.
If you wanna take a couple pictures of the spots that are there, that might help us see what's there.
Yeah, yeah, maybe take a picture of the back here, 'cause, maybe take a.
The covered spots that don't show up on the aerial photo.
Exactly. And, and maybe talk to Jessica about getting her from the Conservation Commission about this area back here. What you need to do about that.
If you intend to, if you intend to continue to park back there. I mean, the Conservation Commission did sign off on it based on what was submitted.
On the plan, yeah.
But she didn't have the aerial, so.
And then went there over the years, so I don't know who's on the board now, but when I first did it, she used to ride her horses back there all the time.
Kelly Ritchie, she's not on the board anymore.
Yeah, so, but nothing's really changed from our use since then.
So can, what were those three things again, Chris? Confirm the square footage of the building, the number of employees and new students?
The total number of employees, so they can forget the parking and then how you proposed to add that third handicap parking spot.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that's pretty simple.
Okay.
Can I borrow this pen?
Yes, you may.
All right, is there, is there anything else we're gonna need, folks, that we should ask for now? I think that's the only missing information.
One of the items was to confirm the addition meets all setback requirements. Did we confirm that?
What do we have for setback requirements here, Jessica?
Um, you know, you guys could bring your own zoning.
I have. I got it right here.
You know, do your own homework.
But you find it so much faster.
It's like my family.
I'll race you, Jessica.
Just lean on me for everything.
I'll race you, ready? Go. You won.
Higher. All right, industrial, any other permitted structure principal use? Front setback is 50, side setback is 25.
I don't have a plan, she shows that.
All right, so side setbacks is definitely 25 on this plan.
Twenty-five.
And that's, it's on the.
And we had this conversation with you before because you were trying to go to the setback.
I thought it was 212 and you said, no.
We said, well, you could, but you go ZBA and it might be difficult and blah, 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 and just if you make it.
And it looks like.
62, I can't even read that.
It's 25 on the side.
Yeah.
And then it looks like it's 106 on, on that diagonal line there, but which I assume is.
You just need to have 30 feet in the back, 50 in the front and 25 on the sides.
So, wait, how much in the front?
50.
Yeah.
I, I think no matter how you do it on the curved road, there's more than 50 anywhere you go around there 'cause it looks like the closest is 106.
It was more that side setback that was, I just wanted to confirm.
Yep, that's exactly 25, which I'm curious why they did that.
All right, and you can still, and they can, yeah, never mind.
Okay, all right, so.
Do we need to continue?
Yeah, do you think, two weeks enough time to get that stuff together?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm back to 12, but I'm gonna contact everybody and start them on it. So just to be clear, for the daycare, employees and students.
Yep.
Expected on the, on the new expansion.
At build-out.
And, and you as well, so an employee number for you as well.
And then they got Pioneer employees and then extra handicap spot.
Yep.
Yep, and confirm the square footage of the building. For both floors and.
And if you wanna take some pictures of the parking lot, more parking spaces.
And for your own benefit, if you can get it to the board ahead of time, rather than bringing it to the meeting, it will help you.
Wait, yeah.
Good advice.
C before.
All right, so the 18th is the next one?
Eighteenth, yep.
Eighteenth is the next one, so we need a motion to continue?
Uh, can, this is administrative. I, I motioned to continue the 15 industrial parkway. Is this site plan approval till April 18?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed abstentions, okay.
Administratively, I wonder if maybe we can switch the order these happen?
Sure, oh yeah, totally.
Yeah. All right.
Oh yeah, I would love.
You're welcome.
I would've done that had I known that it was going to be what it was, but.
All right, Brian, thanks for cooperation. We'll see you in a couple weeks. All right, moving right along, administrative items, amendment to the planning board rules and regs.
Yeah, I forgot we were gonna do this. Okay, hold on. Give me one, give me one second to get myself, get these files back in order.
I have mine right here if you need help, Jess.
No, 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 no. Thanks, Jesse. Why don't you take the lead on this one? Wanna?
I, we can talk about this, yeah. So this came up recently, right? I can't remember what it was.
Right, so we had Cumberland Farms who, the board wanted peer review and they, you know, accepted. And in the, in the past, I mean, the board has done peer review for projects, big, large projects. But really, we need to have something that's in the books that, that sets the process in place for what needs to happen with the hiring of outside consultants. So this is, this is really just modeled off of other communities. I did a bunch of research and found other communities and saw what they had and the language is pretty consistent. But I did some tweaks to make it specific to our board and the requirements that we would be looking for and the permits that, that the board does. And so, so I'd like to see the board and, to adopt this under the planning board rules and regulations and that just needs a majority vote of the board. There's no hearing that needs to be scheduled. This is an administrative document. But the question that I have for the board is, while the body's open, is there anything else that we would want to tweak or look at under rules and regulations that hasn't been changed or updated since it was first adopted, which was before my time maybe, or right when I started?
I think it was right before you.
A former member wrote it?
Yep.
So, so I guess.
Gardner, right?
No.
No, it was Ron.
It was Ron, yeah.
I, I was here.
Okay.
But I, you know, it was distant.
So that's the question, so I, you know, I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at the rules and regs and, and think about whether there's anything that needed to be changed or any processes that needed to be changed. And, you know, we can take that other stuff at another time and just deal with this tonight, but it's, you know, I like to have you think about it, whether it makes sense to make other amendments to the document.
The only other thing I thought that was relatively unimportant, but just to clean things up, is we, we never amended this when we changed our meeting times.
Oh.
Which allows us to, it says in the rule that we can change it by majority vote, but we didn't change it in here, so it still says 6:00 PM.
Okay.
So we might as well clean that up.
Okay.
I didn't see anything else in here, but there's, I mean, this is the kind of thing we could go in circles about for weeks and weeks and weeks.
We could.
But I didn't, I, this is the first thing, the new hiring outside consultants is the first thing, I think, where we've sort of run across something that's missing.
Yeah.
And so I think it's definitely something that we need and it certainly helps us and the applicants to have it in the rules. But I didn't see anything else, looking through it before the meeting, that jumped out as sort of incorrect or not what we want to be doing, but.
Well, the things that I brought up when it was being drafted, I'm sure still won't fly, the, you know, the compensation for board members, the hospitality during the meetings. It's just not gonna happen, so.
That will not fly.
I'm gonna get a lap after.
Sorry, guys.
The other one, are, are the fees still accurate? It's broken down in there under 12?
Uh, yeah, and that's a discussion we really need to have. It came up during the industrial review zoning document that our fees are way low compared to our neighbors and, but I need to do a little bit of analysis in terms of like my hourly, Jamie's hourly, how much time we actually spend processing. but I need to do a little bit of analysis in terms of like, my hourly, Jamie's hourly, how much time we actually spend processing, some applications take more time than others, so is there some sort of average comparing it to other communities? So, I think we could be going up at least a hundred dollars, makes sense to me, but-
Didn't you start doing some analysis on that?
I haven't.
And is it really true that we set those fees, the planning board does that unilaterally, it doesn't require any?
No, I did look into that.
Okay, well, let's, let's continue to set that aside, I guess, 'cause we don't have a number to replace it with, but I would suggest we amend, um, rule five regarding the start times to six-thirty,
Yep.
And also add a new rule fifteen, and move current fifteen to sixteen.
I'm amazed we haven't done anything about rule twelve, I could've sworn we, we talked about increasing those numbers at some point.
We did, but I needed to come up with numbers, and I haven't done it yet.
Yes.
Okay, so, you said you wanna change fi, rule five to say six-thirty P M?
No, it says the second and fourth Tuesdays, and we meet the first and third Tuesdays.
Okay. I could've sworn you just said six-thirty, like, we meet at six.
Five, rule five with the days of the week, yeah, the-
And it should say municipal building, not city hall. We don't have a city hall, we call ourselves a municipal building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, okay. Did you have any changes to the proposed rules? Okay. I did send it to the mayor and the procurement officer, and haven't heard anything back from them, so.
And town council suggested we do this, but did not review the language?
They have not reviewed the language, I could send it to him for review, if that would make for it.
Then, rule number four, Jim, was made for me when I came in, because there was a discussion as to whether or not I would get to vote on administrative matters, and they all thought I should, so, it's awesome that you have it.
I mean, should we have town council look at this before we vote on it, then?
You can, I mean, I can send it to him to do a review.
Well, how do people feel?
I think it's, I think it's, why not?
It costs the city money, that's why.
We don't pay them until we give them work.
Ah. Let's just approve it and move on with it, it just affects us.
Alright, and don't, don't-
I mean, I, what, how about this, how about I check with the mayor and ask her whether she wants me to send it to, to the city solicitor, and if so, then I will do so, I will check with the mayor.
Okay.
So what was the issue about rule ten, what was the question about that, why we didn't, someone say something about rule ten? Didn't you just say that, or am I just-
When I said it was four.
Yeah, okay, I thought someone said something about-
Rule twelve is what has the fees.
Update the fees, yeah, and we're gonna, we're gonna revisit updating fees?
Planning departments gonna do some analysis.
Okay.
And get back to us.
And remember, there was a, a document you gave us that showed the other cities' fees, and were we are in line, and we were just insane about it. Yeah, I, I seem to recall doing that for the Conservation Commission too, I sent an email out to all the other Conservation Commissions, and there was this big discussion about fees, and, so that we could, when we were doing our regs, we had some fee numbers, so there's definitely-
So, are you on some sort of like planning board?
Yeah, well, there's a mass plan, this listserv, yes, and this comes up very frequently, but I think we wanna be comparable to our regional neighbors, not necessarily Eastern Mass.
Boston, yeah. Yeah.
So, do we want to vote on these changes now and wait and see if we need to get town council involved, or do we wanna wait and do this at the next meeting? I guess there's no real rush, not, not, it's not gonna need to get used.
Till we get the numbers and see if we can get it all done at once with the-
We could do that.
Oh, you're putting pressure on me.
Two weeks, two, two soon?
Okay.
Um, I'll give it a go.
Do we have, we don't have any huge things coming up, do we?
Um, you're not my only board that I serve.
No, 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 I, I made it that way, I'm just wondering, do we need to accelerate this?
Yeah, in the next two weeks, I'm gonna use this.
We are going to have, I'm expecting some big projects coming down the pipeline within the next couple months.
You are, okay.
I mean, I've had some pre-development meetings with some projects that were big, um, they were pre-development, so they could fall apart, but, um-
So it behooves us to accelerate this.
Let's give two weeks to see if, if we wanna get town council, and if the mayor wants to get town council.
Yeah, the mayor's called, yep.
And if so, we should have time to get an opinion.
Yep.
If we don't get the fee stuff, we should probably still vote on all the other stuff at the next meeting, so we at least have this tool.
Yep.
Yep, good.
Okay.
Good, thank you.